Alright, so again, it's the high-grade meeting. We have people online, people in the audience. I appreciate you being here. If we need to call on you for an audience citizen or if you are a subject matter expert, I'd ask that you state your name, your address, and everybody in attendance will keep it respectful, or you will be asked to leave. Saying so, since both of you weren't here, please join me in the budgeting. Okay, proof of the agenda. I move to approve the agenda as presented. For any questions? Wants, desires? Seeing none, all of them in favor? Audience or citizen, anything that's on the agenda that you'd like to speak of?
Does that mean that if it is on the agenda, we can just speak to it when you're speaking of it?
Why don't you make your comment? I'll thank you and we'll talk about it later. I don't want to miss it. You're not supposed to speak during the meeting, so please.
I'm here just because I-
Who recognizes Millie Ramsey?
I'm here because I'm here to what your coffee on the channel which will help with the meeting will be. There's lots of years saying that it's going together and together. So I would personally want to request that you consider the blue metal roofing. But what was there previously was blue metal roofing. Replacing a building that's extremely close to the water, it's close to water, has spolting doors have run off into the water. But if you must, in the asphalt, they don't, they don't come in blue. I request this point because I don't know which roof you want.
Thank you. Anybody online? Nothing in the chat? Okay, see no more, we'll move on. Old business. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. We'll go back. I move to approve the board's second ready meeting man to the line, same thing. Any concern, deletion, additions, omissions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And give passes. Uh, that will be, um, I move to approve the donation of the weather station by Henry Beck Jr. In memory of his father. Benner here, there, how are you? You're on mute, so come on, unmute.
You're still on mute? Pretty good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm happy to pick up where we left off several years ago. Uh, when we had made this donation through LMAC and then something happened to the beach pavilion after we had studied a number of locations at which to try to install the weather station. And the beach pavilion looks like a good location. I couldn't quite hear Millie's comments. I'm sure she was, it sounded like she was talking about the beach pavilion, so I'll catch up with her later. But that's where we were proposed to install it. We would like to have LMAC be authorized to work with the facilities manager on the location of that at the beach pavilion. We would craft a decorative attachment to put the instruments on the pavilion and have the readout be in the Department of Recreation where they could see what's on the screen at any one particular time and it would go from there to the internet. And Greg Stryker, who also is with me on lake management, has done the most recent studies on this equipment. He's prepared to speak to the details of that at the moment. But what we're looking for now is just a kind of a general acceptance that we're proceeding to investigate and to put this in place. And I specifically would hope that it would be okay for me to make a silent, or not a silent, but a, a, a soft announcement of this to a number of lake people that are going to be joining us uh, at my home on September 23rd to celebrate the fact that my family has been on the lake for a hundred years.
Okay, so, Greg? Yeah, Greg Stryker, Greg, Samoan Road, and I've been working with Henry, uh, the systems, I'm not sure. Bill, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I don't know if you have any questions. How big is the unit that's going on the pavilion? Are you choosing the, the, uh, at WS 5000? Okay, it's, it, so I actually have pictures of it. And this is the sixth though. Yeah, so there, there was another, um, there's multiple pages in Henry's. Henry, are you going with the 5000? Is that the model you asked for?
The ambient weather one?
Well, we, we, we've looked at a couple of different opportunities and the one that Greg is passing out is probably the best. And we were proposed mounting it on the beach pavilion roof with some decorative ironwork uh, to make it be secured. And whether it's on the very peak or on the side will depend on talking with the facilities management and also with the provider of the equipment. What we're looking to do is to maximize the accuracy of the reading, particularly with respect to wind direction and speed.
Yeah, so the, the ambient, there are two systems we're looking at. The ambient weather, the WS 5000 and the rain wise 6000. I've actually owned both of these, had my belt. Um, and I, I use the ambient weather one now. It, I just find it, it's much smaller. You see the dimensions, uh, like eight inches versus twenty-three inches. The rain, the rain catch on the rain wise is probably double the size. So when you're mounting it on the pavilion fascia, which is I think where we would recommend putting it, it's, it's much sleeker, smaller than the rain wise system. I mean, the ambient weather system. Um, and the ambient weather, the other reason I like it is, is you look in the picture, that, that device that's the small one down on the lower lap, that's actually a wind sensor, uses ultrasonic sensors instead of a cups. Um, and that makes it smaller and then that rain catch is like I say about a half size. So you can really make it sleek and, uh, although much nicer. It also gives you more advantages as to what you can monitor. Um, and like you can, we can add a water sensor temperature, so you can get the temperature of the lake. You can get a lightning detector. Alert the, the direct department of lightning, right? Uh, versus just looking at your vital. There is, um, the, the, the unit where you mount it transmits to a display, a small display. Which would be in the rec department. And then that display transmits to the internet. And then on the internet, anybody in town, you know, wherever they are, can set up a account on ambient weather and view the data from the system. You can also download an app on your phone and just have it on your phone. My neighbors use my system for both weather. And what's also cool about it is you can monitor, like if you have another, uh, home roll case something in Florida, you can also pull up data down the floor. There's, there's thousands of these things installed. And people, if they want to, put their data on the internet and most everybody does. There's one now, uh, right on the corner of eighty-seven, uh, that's off the lake. And then there's one in the corner of eighty-seven and sixty-six. And then mine, all within three miles of each other. So it's a hot system. And then on top of that, um, if you want something displaying in your home, in your home, like pretend you have your own system, there's a, the weather window, which I pictured down the bottom, is nothing more than a wifi picture bring that has software in it to pull in the data from whatever station, whatever information on that station you want. So you, so that, anybody, it's $200. But you can mount that on a wall or in the desktop and you can get that weather from our lake or, you know, from your remote home. So, but it's a really nice system. I've had mine for about a year. Um, before that, I had my system. It's a really nice system. It's just not as user-friendly and it's much larger.
The, the beauty of this situation is that, as Greg has described, allows anybody in town as well as LMAC to have access to this data real time rather than relying on data that's averaged from other areas close around the state, but not as real as, you know, how much rain did we get in the lake? Where is the lake level likely to be at? What are the wind speeds for the, the sailing association? What's the water temperature for my kids to go swimming, et cetera?
Yeah, so, you know, you're putting Mary out of a job. So, yeah, yeah. Any questions from the board? I also have my app if anybody wants to see, see it. Um, I like it.
We had, we had hundreds of languages in there for years.
So, uh, as we work on it for all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you. Okay, Henry, thank you so much.
You're welcome and thank you.
Hey, so where do you mount it? Wherever you mounted on the pavilion, I would, you might want to consider putting a plaque on the inside right, you know, about why the weather station is in for your father and stuff, donated by the Beck family and honor of.
Thank you.
People know why it's there.
Thank you.
We can help you get that name too. Okay, and now, the update on the pavilion.
Any, any friends? So we have a meeting set up for tomorrow at two o'clock with the builder, our new facilities managers, even myself and the building official and the architect. So some things have come to light, uh, that some of the structural framing, uh, needs to be added based on the architectural drawings. And the architect's going to point that out, but the builder will be coming up with a way to fix that, which could solve the builder's request for extra bracing because the bracing, the architect was not, built exactly the way the architect wanted it built. So we're meeting on that to fix the bracing. We're meeting on the request we've had for handicap access and what options the best. In talking to the architects, the handicap access of a ramp doesn't really seem practical based upon the topography of that area. It would be like a sixty-foot ramp. Um, so we're looking at a lift. Uh, the building official didn't originally require lift because he felt the other gazebo could act as a handicap accessible gazebo, though it's small. But the nuance gets to be if there's an event and the gazebo's not handicap accessible for everybody at that event. So you rent the gazebo, it, you couldn't trade off. But to get out of the sun, we offered that with the other gazebo. So we'll need direction from the board, but I'm having the architect give me their recommendation uh, for, it looks like we have room to the right of the stairs to put in an exterior outdoor lift without it covered. It would be open, but it's exterior.
And that would be okay for the weather?
It's designed to be, it's designed to have four seasons.
But of course, it was not in the budgeting of it.
And how much does a lift cost?
Well, from my quick analysis, looks like fifteen thousand, but I'm going to ask the architect if the one I looked at online is sufficient for commercial units. The rent might even be more because you'd also have to build the site to, because you, the sidewalk that goes to the gazebo right now is lower than the handicap accessible.
Finding your foot or ramp, and it's really safe.
So all that will be discussed tomorrow too with the committee.
Mark. Where do we stand as far as, um, the insurance company covering, uh, these expenses?
Once I know exactly what I'm going to ask for, I'll reach out and ensure it's going to get that information to the board.
You haven't taken a position yet?
No, they haven't. Uh, one of, um, the other discussion is metal roof versus asphalt. So we'll, we'll discuss that tomorrow on side two. That's an extra fifteen thousand.
It's, it's fifteen thousand dollars more for that little roof. That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it's seven thousand five hundred for the material of the roof. You have to bring the lift back again and the builder estimates one week of time and don't.
For a roof?
Metal roof.
A metal roof.
The assembly and crafting of the metal roof. We'll have more.
Yeah, we're not done. I'm just bracing everybody with the latest in the saga of rebuilding.
As far as the insurance company bill, we didn't have a handicap accessibility in the last one. So if they were to cover in kind, we'll, we'll have a tough time getting them to probably pay for them.
I'm not sure about that. You know, I'm, I'm thinking that i- if you're required by law to have a, a certain standard that they should meet that standard rather than just saying that you have to stick with what you had before as far as the value. You know, I think it's something that should be, should be pushed a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. What do we have for our?
No, they're not. We, we could have more footprints that could be sent this way. Uh, we're also having some serious issues with our air, air handling system at the senior center. Uh, we're having our new facilities manager is working with off-seasons and control features. We're trying to get that fixed. But we were told the air on the system's twenty-six years old and it's, that's, it's dead. So that might be, I was thinking might be able to use market money. For that, I haven't got any votes yet, but just now, we've been having trouble with the water that's being pulled out of the humid air, uh, drainage property. It's going to come through the ceiling instead of through a bowl. It's plodding.
It's plodding, it's pouring.
So there's a lot of issues there that we're recovering. What are we still on the generator? Generator, the electrician, we, the electrician's going before the pad, put all the conduit. And then we're place the generator. I don't have the exact date. And then we're going to dig the hole. Um, for the, okay. This seems.
Is that, is the air handling unit that you're discussing, is that just AC or is that HVAC heating in?
Well, I have to check because I, I kind of remember in the back of my head that we did some HVAC work over at the senior center. We did, so that's what I'm having to do. We, we put in fifteen thousand dollars with the new control calls. So my question is why do we put new controls on the twenty-six year old HVAC system? Well, that's, we, we, there's a lot of things we're, we're trying to uncover. But we still have the, and we're not sure that the controls are working because we can't, we don't have the password to get into the controls to make sure it's working correctly. And maybe that's the issue of the drain. I, I don't-
I mean, if, if you have too many degrees below the outside air, then you start getting freezing and stuff. But they just try to get it to, to hold.
Well, the problem is there's too many capable of cutting the thermostat, so.
Yeah, well, yes, I mean, that happens. Maybe, you know, if people get one person-
That's the same fault when I go around and they keep the two. The, my biggest concern is humidity moisture. Right, that's what we can't tolerate.
To back to that metal roof, what's the life of an asphalt roof compared to a metal?
Asphalt's twenty to thirty years based on quality of asphalt. Metal roof's about fifty years. So, so what's, what's the impact of water quality of a metal roof on your work? Or? It'll mix with the sand, but. Like, I, I'm just asking if, if, or we have an idea, I mean.
Well, with every house around the lake, I don't think any one of them has a metal roof, so. Well, I'm sorry, ma'am. But none of them really that close.
You can always take and run the gutter on, the gutter on your door. You gutter it, so. That seems excessive to me, just.
I would agree.
Really, yes. Because you have to take off the cost of an asphalt roof. You know what I mean? So you're saying fifteen plus whatever we're spending on an asphalt roof.
I already, I already said that to the builder and he said, let us, let me get all the answers. You know, because he says, well, I've done things that I thought were necessary that weren't in the plans and they've cost money and I haven't. We need to get it worked out. Okay, I will.
All the questions?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll just take Mary first?
No. Is that your question? Because is that your statement? Not everyone?
Let's see, let me see. Oh, the builder is doing lovely because I see him working every morning right currently and said, but fifteen thousand dollars for a metal roof that already has seen, probably within, seen success. Is there an option for each completes the other parts? Can you find some of them?
Mary? I don't know. That's a question.
Very rightly so. We're going really, just about my comment, um, as perhaps part of the solution. The mentioning with others already, but there are environmental ways to collect all of roofs, rain barrels as an example. We've got a master garden on this lake and her one is designed with rain barrels, so she captures that water and does not go into the lake. Um, at least initially. So, you know, just please consider environmental if you use apple aspects to it. Thank you.
So that's the end of this discussion. Bottom line is, we have questions. We have a meeting tomorrow. Right? Uh, new business.
Seven point one, uh, every ten years, we sign a DOT uh, MMAC, which is a master municipal agreement for constructing projects. It's a requirement of DOT, it's a hundred thirty-page contract, so they don't send this contract every time you do joint work with DOT in the panel. And ours is expiring in August. We signed it ten years ago. And it includes, um, the standard terms, conditions, contracting boilerplate language, generally governing all municipal construction projects involving a DOT, which are undertaken throughout a ten-year term. And this is a, a new order. I would just need a motion to authorize Stephen signing.
Make a motion to authorize Stephen signing. The master municipal agreement, construction products.
I have one comment. It is lots of notches thing that never is ready. And we wonder why everything in our life is complicated. That was, it's, it's just ridiculous. In my opinion, it's a ridiculous thing to happen.
Trying to change it.
Yeah, because I, I, there are a few terms that I think were egregious. I think there's a lot of red tape, particularly that we need a modern AI in order to give a lead to a contract to do work with. So it's, and I'm going to be my question, is this really beneficial to us? I mean, do we, do we really benefit from the assistance and grants and you and this?
And that was my question to Mark. What if we don't sign it?
And I think in the system we're in, where a lot of our, we have, we stay highways surrounding our town and they intersect some of our roads and our projects. I, I don't think it's advisable not to. It'll, it'll probably put a stop to, like the, um, road crossing that we put down on eighty-seven. Now, that's a joint project between the town and DOT, right down on the airline track. I don't think, without that master agreement, I wouldn't have that project put in that whole. So it's a, it's a pedestrian cross with solar lighting, lighting up.
So this is giving the town, or it's giving, towns giving DOT permission to do the work?
It's a, it's a general agreement contracts that involve all the town and state.
So anytime we go, go to contract on the outside, we'll do work ourselves and we involve the DOT. Or whether we don't, we have their boilerplate attorney.
We've already done the agreements, so we don't have to go through this every time.
This adds so much, we wonder why everything the state does costs so much money and if people want to take the time, that's.
Well, just look at the Hundero Cullver, how ridiculous the state wouldn't give us the permit to join their fan, our new call. So we had to cut the old culvert and leave it. With two feet of the old culvert, right, you know, bad cement between the two new pipe. So it's very fine. The reason the Hundero Bridge works is it's entirely a, it's a federal state project. There it is.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of signing?
Aye.
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 Um, opposed? I'm staying. What?
He's abstaining.
Any guesses in two sentences? Good, so three, yes, right. One, two, three.
I, oh, yes.
Okay, four, yes.
They, they can't remember, can't.
They, they don't, we can't do it.
No.
Next, we have the certificate of adoption from, a document, the hazard mitigation and climate adoption.
Okay, here we go again. In order to qualify for the possibility of ever meeting a FEMA green, we had a major weather event such as Deborah, there's a supply. We've been working on this for three years between, um, the emergency management director, the public director, myself and our town planner. Uh, we created our biggest concerns in Columbia, such as the Prime Street Culvert, uh, which we are now in the process of repairing. But we've listed our major concerns that weather could affect. We've listed, um, what our critical facilities are, what our challenges are. So this document will feed into a FMA, a FEMA application. So I would just need a motion.
Does, does this outline all those things? It doesn't really give us all the information.
Your concern.
Yeah.
We didn't give you the entire hundred forty-eight pages.
This whole thing that hundred?
Well, no, this is a portion of that. This is our portion.
I thought this was a different, a whole different.
No, that's what we've been working on that.
And it breaks it down into different.
Columbia portion.
And and playing it back.
So we adopted based upon mitigation plan that the capital region.
Right, so they, they start a mitigation plan for all, the whole forty four towns are in the problem. And then we modify it to Columbia and this entire mitigation plan is on the bottom.
Was your committee, subcommittee that, I'm sorry. Your subcommittee that was asked to look at the various over to relative, did any, that's something that hasn't waited in, other than.
Because this was, this was our last year, I think, are you going to look at this?
Fine, I will tell you, we're going through this, it's matched.
It's matched.
So there are your priorities.
Yeah, but we might discern.
I do wish I had more time to study it and discuss it before I would get any, you know, sign.
So what does a lot of the deal apply for the grants?
No, applied for FEMA reimbursement should we have a natural disaster. If we meet. It's a pet box, it has to be controlled.
So the email that Nicole sent us, who is a representative, says an approved local mitigation plan, including adoption by the local government, is one of the conditions for applying for and or receiving FEMA mitigation grants for the following programs. Uh, and there's blood mitigation assistance, additive mitigation assistance, um, hazard for post fire, you know, lay down a phone or something. Um, building resilient infrastructure in communities, nice fancy terms for if you want anything from FEMA, you decide us.
So is it, did we recently through Senator Ruffin's office, I think, recommended to apply for FEMA grant for the five three exact?
And we did not get it.
We didn't.
Okay, we did apply and it wasn't, I don't know if it was Senator Renna.
We didn't, well, apply as a region with enough data.
I didn't know, when I read the details, it sounded like it was like we needed to.
Yeah, well, that was my, that was also my concern is once again, we're opening the door again to have whatever in Columbia. Not under Columbia guidance, under Columbia governance, but would we ever get a FEMA?
I don't know, talk to Vermont.
It's also an update, we, we had the hazard.
We just bought it.
Thank you. Take your name, um, so, uh, you know, again, we're what kind of required to do this?
What I do during the day?
So, did I make a mistake?
No.
I moved formally adopt the Capital Region Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adoption Plan, update twenty four, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty nine. Any more discussion? Seeing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Cause all the great things, interesting. Nothing, nothing new on the way. Appointments and resignations. This is, good for you, right? Not their wife, but. We, we had, uh, an opening on the Board of Education and I moved to appoint Marie Ram to the Board of Education. Now, in saying that, I was actually pleasantly surprised on a couple of meetings and, uh, Maria Ram was there. She voiced opinions, she asked questions after the meeting, she asked me questions and, um, in, in the word that she spoke, she was not definitive on any opinions, but was asking questions of, you know, why this, why that, and then her last one was, how do I get more involved? So she's here today, that, you know, don't blame me. But, uh, the board of it, um, they could use another, uh, educated and free thinking and the parent who wants the best for their kids, but understanders. They took all to consider for understanding, so I'll endorse you. In saying that, anybody else? Now, would you like to say why?
From what you just said, that I found it impressive, hopefully it has value, maybe it's more better for community success, so.
Now you're feeling it for Leah Osborne, Mark, and what does that turn in?
She just, uh, oh God, I don't get insurance, know that.
It may have to go down.
I think it would be, I would appreciate that last time, so it would be twenty twenty.
You're ready, please, I'm pretty sure. Okay.
And the DTC unanimously supported it.
Very good. Anybody have a question or ready? Do you have?
Yeah, twenty four, twenty five.
All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I know.
Yep, so you're locked in for a year, good for you.
So, Mark, you'll notify these superintendent?
Yeah, and we can know.
I, I didn't tell Brandon about the.
It's official.
So you can show the next period. It should be a surprise.
Hello? Uh, the next is the appointment of Todd Marsh, highway maintainer, and we'll point out Mark as a highway maintainer for the Park of Public Works. I know that they've been looking for months. So, uh, when they got a quality candidate, they were very pleased and they put him forward to us. He lived in Chaplain, you know, his, uh, his resume, he's been here?
Yes.
For anybody to look at, um, I believe he's currently working down in the Grotten area, getting a selected book and, uh, he wants to come here. Chaplain?
Chaplain, yeah, that's the one, right, this is potion. Yeah.
So, um, and this is, this is the person that Beth has put forward, right?
Yes.
Any questions? Beth is not on the line?
No, she's.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can you add this to the deal?
Yes.
So, uh, we'll tell Beth to make an offer. Thank you. Time administration for.
Um, just a quick update, September eighteen, actually September sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, the Montopon State Park, recipients of the master plan to create a biking, walking, horse trail system throughout the whole state park. That company is here for those three days. And it's called the IMBA, the International Mountain Biking Association. And they'll be working with the Deep Trails Division, Trust the Public Land. And they'll be presenting their findings and regulations between four thirty and seven in this room on September eighteen.
Okay, go over the participants again?
People, the trails division in charge of the park bail system.
And the town of Columbia.
And town of Columbia and the friends of Montopon.
Thank you, and the town of Columbia.
Yes.
Does somebody want to be representing the town of Columbia?
Well, I'll be there. The reason I'm telling the board of selectmen is I, like you.
All right, what do you intend to say? I'm not here during that time, so I'm concerned about that, because one of the things that, when we talk about Montopon and everything, and we brought in friends, not friends of Montopon, but.
The friend.
The government.
The country public lands.
Right. We didn't want to lose total control.
And we just had a kickoff meeting and it was made clear that we need to be involved in their master plan, can't just be deep's master plan.
Okay, that's good.
And Tom Grath and I, and, uh, we're in that meeting. Um, so we're keeping our head under the tent.
So what?
September, they're here, the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, presentation on the eighteenth and fourth or in this room.
All right, you're right, see, I just, I just want to make sure.
Email with all information, but.
Uh, the presentation will, would it be anybody who wants to attend in the whole town?
Yes.
Yes.
Public, so. Thank you, just because of. Right, what's they know?
There's that activities going on.
Activities.
Yes.
You can tell that Todd Marsh.
Anything else on this, Tom Minister?
Yes, um, there's a, we're applying for a grant. A cyber, it's called the state local cybersecurity grant. Beverly and I and novice have been working on this grant, we're trying to get a grant that will be ninety percent of upgrading all of our cybersecurity and there's the details I have attached in here. But right now, the cost of the cybersecurity upgrade is, uh, thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand. We're trying to get a ninety percent reimbursement against that cost. And these are required cybersecurity upgrades needed to, um, keep us safe from being hacked or, or taken over by a cyber threat. And in part of it too, is converting to dot gov designation, which is safer than our present dot org. And how dot gov is safer than dot org?
This is, it's just letters.
But tab it. All your emails, you know, you've got your.
Have a fun evening.
You do it. No, maybe, maybe you didn't ask them. Some members of that didn't want to put their company. So that's just a heads up there. I also included in the packet and I won't go over in detail any of this because it's a lot of information, but the Eastern Island Health District, framework that they're going to use to document what their goals are for this year, uh, working with our community, such as informing and mobilizing, enforcing the laws and community healthcare. So on and on, and also the strategic playbook for pod, our council of governments, which we, we work with all the agencies for federal, state, um, with the programs at the government of Columbia. And then also the Community Investment Act, we've been working with to go after grants in public health and historic preservation, the Fort of Ohio, the Southern Space, Agribaltar, so this is the new agency through the Community Investment Act that, um, keep an eye on. And also the National League of Cities. Uh, I thought it was interesting, they had some, um, court cases that will involve different towns in certain ways. Uh, and some rulings, but I thought it'd be interesting to read these bases. Uh, one is on a new verdict concerning, uh, enforcement of ordinance is banning public camping and homelessness on town property. Uh, so that's becoming a hot button nationwide and they ruled that, uh, that the towns do have a say in where people from King's, uh, town property. Uh, so I'm not going to get into that ruling, although I wanted to go into more detail on it. Uh, because it is a, I wanted to read the briefs that were attached, but I haven't. But I just gave you the general analysis. And also we had Supreme Court rulings and CCM, our lobbyist group for the towns, uh, were involved in a couple, uh, rulings that will affect, uh, taxation assessment, a lot of hospitals were buying up local, medical practices, and then once they went under their nonprofit status, the towns were losing the taxable revenue on equipment, such as very expensive inventory equipment and things like that. Were the ruling concerning that and also a ruling concerning, uh, Ben McIsland appealed to the Supreme Court. They were, um, it's all on, who is your local newspaper you advertise your landing zoning, uh, announcements of legal notices? And Ben McIsland, it always, which is part of Old Sacred, it always uses Old Town Press, but the ruling came, they, they were sued, that no one gets in Old Town Press in Old Sacred. Um, so that they were not aware of the legal notice, but set on precedent that that is the paper of record for Old Sacred. They were able to overturn the appeal. So it, it, it ties in because the newspapers are, you know, people aren't buying newspapers anymore and the state still forces us to do our legal recordings through.
Asociations don't even.
Right, but we still have to pay to have legal notices in newspapers that most of our residents don't receive. So I thought that was interesting. In the end, I wanted to bring you all to speed that the, um, zoning regulations were adopted, uh, concerning our new, um, accessory dwelling and rural family, um, changes, so the one thing is, right now, there's, there's two major changes. Thing one is any resident can have two dwelling units on their property as a right. So you could build an in-law little house if you like, or to rent. Uh, a duplex with two units, uh, no square footage cap on a single building. But an accessory unit has a nine hundred fifty square foot cap, that's as big as it can be. And a multifamily development, previously multifamilies in, were only allowed in the commercial district. Uh, senior housing and retirement condos such as Woodford Village were allowed to. Now, single set of multifamily regulations have been created, all under special permit. You, anything required, requiring multifamily has to be a special permit application with many zone. Um, this is allowable anywhere in town except the lake area. And it would still require public hearings and potential conditions for the town to develop and buy planning zone. And housing density is going to be based on soil capacity per septic. Um, but they'll allow a bonus if you have affordable units in your multifamily. So right now, if you all units are market rate, you can only build to seventy percent capacity. But if you go twenty percent affordable, you can go a hundred percent capacity. So let's say a hundred percent capacity for the soil is a, a ten unit, so you do ten units if twenty percent of them are. For four, so those are the main changes, I incorporated these new, um, regulations in refiner, uh, for your review. And that's now passed. And that's all I have to do.
Okay, there's important findings, uh, I have a question, maybe you could give me the answer to the, or maybe I'm missing it, my math is sometimes not that good. So in July, we had ten total traffic stops. There was six written warnings, so that leaves nine, uh, excuse me, four, so we totally bet. Two verbal warnings, so that leaves two, and yet three DUIs. Did one of the DUIs get a verbal or written warning? They just don't add up to many. Okay, all right, and I'd like to know the time of day, it says we had a hundred and twenty six calls for service in the town of Columbia. And now I'd like to know, uh, the time of day these came in. If we could. Thank you.
Uh, and that one, just so you know, we, we've approved, uh, Todd Marsh. So he's all set to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, there's a couple of other things that were in the news some hours ago. Okay, uh, budget, I move to. Okay, uh budget, I move to two transfers presenting presented only five hundred and twenty nine dollars. I recall above budget for electricity. And again, those a lot. I recall both your uh invoice for mulch. And service call for. For service call invoice at the end of July, we don't know where that was from?
Um.
Is that?
I guess it was probably a scam, sir. Or it would have gone downstairs.
Any questions? All those in favor of transfers?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. The refund, the move to from the payment of bills presented totally. Two hundred ninety five, two hundred ninety five, four hundred and sixteen dollars and five cents, consisting of twenty three, twenty three emergency. Twenty four, twenty five emergency. Twenty three, twenty four regular, twenty four, twenty five regular, twenty three, twenty four unemployment. That's uh sexy little grant number one of four credit card and paychecks.
The fire department.
Yes, yeah. Insurance did they? No.
They would take the damage done by the water.
The damage came into the emergency operations centers and. I think it was wind and flowing water. Wind blowing water, I don't think.
I'm sure they checked it out.
What was the cost on that?
Nine thousand, nine thousand.
I talked to, I talked to assistant uh chief Jeffrey Lewis and he said they weren't in public. Any discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills? Aye.
Aye.
On the bill, thank you. Party is a citizen. Mrs. Grant.
Um I just have a question, I don't know if we're.
The cyanobacteria, so it dissipated with all this rain. Um was never a. It was a health concern, not a help. Banning on swimming, but you, we we recommended that the public, they saw the cyanobacteria, did not allow your pets. Or to swim uh in the bacteria, but we had the health director come down, look at it, he said that. The density was nowhere near enough to be a concern for health of people. So, beach never closed.
Oh, okay, I had the other.
The beach closed because we couldn't be lifeguards on Saturday.
Beach didn't close, you're swimming your own. That was. You got the name for that, right? If, yes.
Yes, two things, yes, I may. People who are going to be meeting, another one of the house boat. Um I would encourage you to go on marine patrol boat and actually go out into the water. And see what people will be seeing when they're out in the water. Based on whatever your final decision is. You may recognize that the Pokemon is level. Or close to level with the bonus, there may be other options that are a little more visible. And when you look in a newspaper or. So that would be my only.
More amount of comments? Seeing not at this time, I'm going to suspend the town, the uh board selection meeting and move to executive session. Thank you all for your time and for being here, um I would move into executive session. At seven fifty six P M. And invite Mark Walker, the town administrator, Mary Royko. Uh to attend. Mr. Nani, my dear? Does it record?